Well, let's make it happen. Five fifteen is off. What did your note tell me? Five fifteen, are we pulling it or not? Do you want to call it?
Good evening. Welcome to the March two thousand and eight meeting of the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District. I have been challenged to get us out of here by nine. I can no more do that than I can walk on water. That said, we will start as always with a visit to our clerk for a report on actions taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are two items. First, on a seven to zero vote, the Board approved continuation of medical benefits for a faculty member through August thirty first, two thousand and eight. Secondly, on a five to zero vote, with Trustees Jay and Williams opposing, the Board approved a two-month unpaid leave of absence with benefits to a police officer. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this point, we will invite you to stand for the invocation to be led by Trustee Williams, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, to be led by Trustee Lang.
Yes. Let us pray. O Heavenly Father, we would like to thank you for this beautiful day and the opportunity to serve the good people of our college district. Give us the strength and wisdom to perform our duties as we provide much-needed educational opportunities for our students, and thank you for our many devoted teachers. God, please keep safe our men and women in uniform throughout the world who defend our freedom. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
And please join me as we salute the flag to this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of its citizens, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this point, we have a presentation, and I would like to invite President McCullough and the Chancellor to join me down at the podium with our recipient, and we will turn this over to the clerk to read the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. May I invite to the podium also Mr. John Polakitis. We honor this evening a dedicated Saddleback College employee since nineteen seventy-nine. Whereas John Polakitis was born in nineteen eighteen in Rockford, Illinois, and at the age of twenty moved to California to study aircraft construction at Curtis Wright Tech Institute. And whereas John Polakitis enlisted in the United States Army during World War II, served in General Patton's Ninety-Fourth Infantry Division, fought in the Battle of the Bulge, and earned a Purple Heart. And whereas, following retirement from the Los Angeles Fire Department, John Polakitis has served as a night custodian at Saddleback College since nineteen seventy-nine. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District is hereby recognize and commend ninety-year-young John Polakitis for his dedication over twenty-nine years to generations of Saddleback College students. This motion I so move, and would ask for a second.
Second.
And Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Gray.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student Trustee Reynard.
Aye.
I want to thank Chancellor Mather and the President of the School of Saddleback, Richard McCullough, McCullough, and the Board of Saddleback, and my Director, John Azorvich. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we have a number of requests, oh, yeah, a number of requests to speak, and here they are. We will begin with Susan Naawah, followed by Louis Long.
Hello, my name is Susan Naawah. I am a nursing faculty member of twenty-three or twenty-four years, somewhere in there. And I've come to speak on behalf of the faculty. I just wanted to let you know that as a nursing faculty member, and all the nursing faculty members, they're putting in a lot of time for the college as basically uncompensated time. As I finished for spring break, I realized that I had completed more hours that week than were required till the end of the semester for office hours. And so I just want you to know that the hours that I spend on my office hours, Senate Committee work, and Scholarship Committee will be being donated by my family to the college. So as we look at our review for our contract, I hope you will realize how many dedicated people you have working for this college district, and definitely the nursing faculty are among them. In addition to that, as we look at acquiring new faculty members for the future, as our faculty is definitely looking at some of us getting to the end of our careers, we need to keep the salary levels at an acceptable level that will recruit prepared and outstanding faculty members in the future. In addition to that, I think we really need to look at where we're paying our part-time faculty members. I've had faculty members working for our department point out as part-time faculty members what their salary range is, and then point out that when they consider the time they spend correcting the infamous nursing care plans, they actually are working for half of the salary stated by the college because not only are they being paid at the lab pay rate for their lab time, but they also are spending all the time correcting the papers for no compensation. So I think we really need to look at some of those issues of compensation for all our faculty. Thank you.
Professor Long, followed by Patrina Freed.
Hi, I'm Louis Long. I teach English at Irvine Valley College. I also am serving currently as the Chief Negotiator for the Faculty Association. There are two main points I'd like to make, since I have a limited amount of time. The first one is, I'd like to stress that the faculty has not proposed, in effect, a raise. What we're proposing is an increase to compensate for the cost of living and a decrease in the purchasing power of our salaries, in fact. The salary raise that has been proposed is probably even going to be less than the actual cost of living increase measured by the CPI. The second issue I'd like to bring up is something that I think is very important to keep in mind, something that Professor Naawah touched upon, which is that it's often stated that our faculty is paid at the fourth-highest rank in the state. But in fact, that's only true because we have so many faculty members who have reached the very top compensation level and have skewed the average, because the average is calculated on the amount we've paid out to faculty divided by the number of faculty we have. In fact, if you look at our schedule, for most of the schedule, for ranges through Step Six through Eighteen, we range between eleventh and eighteenth in the state, which means that when those highly compensated faculty members who've reached the top of the schedule retire, which will happen within the next few years, we'll go out to recruit new faculty members to replace them at a very uncompetitive rate, because they can go to Allen Hancock College, come in at the salary level schedule above ours, that's much higher than ours, and still buy a house for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, when you need at least half a million dollars to just buy a condo in South Orange County. So in fact, the real schedule is much worse than the fourth-highest ranking seems to suggest. Many faculty members have showed up to show support for the contract tonight. Many others showed up and weren't able to stay because of the later hour. But these are people who are very committed to this college, and many of them are going to tell you exactly how committed they are about all of the extra hours they put in serving the college beyond what they're compensated for. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ms. Freed, followed by Mike Javon Mard.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Patrina Freed. Twenty-nine years ago, Chancellor Mather and I were hired on the very same day, and his career took a different path than mine because I've stayed in the classroom. But I also have an unusual career path. I taught business science for twenty-five years, and toward the end of that twenty-five years, I had to prepare seven syllabi per semester because I had seven preparations, and that was just getting to be too much. So with the cooperation of Deans Kevin O'Connor and Ken Patton, I was able to transition into teaching German. I think that it was a very wise move for the college. I was able to do this because I had two master's degrees. So for the last four years, I have been teaching German, and I went at my own expense to the Goethe Institute one summer in Germany, another summer to the Treffpunkt Institute in Bamberg. I've made numerous trips, all at my own expense, nothing from the college, to be able to be an excellent German teacher and build the program, which I think that I helped build this program. I created another German class. I built enrollment in a class that was going to be closed down. And I ask you to please consider how diligently I have worked and my colleagues, especially those of us who have the two master's degrees. We add flexibility and depth to the college. We add expertise, and we deserve to have a stipend for this, as well as really a cost of living increase that reflects the cost of living, as Louis said, in the South County. Vielen Dank of need to hear.
Thank you, Professor Freed. We have Mike Javon Mard, followed by Professor Agas.
Good evening. I'm here as previously being a part-time faculty here, and this was the place that gave me an opportunity to learn the teaching profession out of graduate school. This was one of the few schools that took me. And I didn't realize why until I looked at this list, and it seems that you are fortieth in the state for part-time pay. And at Rio Honda, when I went, I left here, I went to Rio Honda and became a full-time faculty, I've been asked to recruit part-timers for social sciences here. And when I tell them there might be positions available in South Orange, they get all excited until I point out to them that I'm not talking about Coast or Orange Coast, I'm talking about South Orange. Coast is, according to this list, thirteenth or eighteenth, depending on where you are, whereas you guys are fortieth. And you guys are losing some of the more qualified part-timers to Orange Coast and Miracosta down the road. So I hope this was the place that gave me my education as an undergrad and gave me my chance to learn how to be an educator as a teacher. So I hope you guys keep getting qualified people, and to do that, unfortunately, you have to pay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Professor Agas, followed by Loma Hopkins.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Gina Agas, and I've taught Spanish at Irvine Valley College since nineteen eighty. I'm here tonight to urge you to settle the contract with a salary schedule that will compensate our faculty for the work that they do. Compensation that is more than just COLA, since we have every reason to expect that the COLA beyond next year will be zero percent. I'm here tonight to talk about the kind of volunteer work that many, if not most, faculty do. Work for which we are not compensated, but which we do because we enjoy working with students, our colleagues, and because we want to see our institutions thrive. I will use myself as an example, but my situation is far from unique. I have been on banked leave this semester, and I felt as if people assumed that a banked leave was a vacation. Well, I'm here tonight to tell you about how I've spent my vacation. I've worked at least one day a week revising the curriculum of nine courses. I've co-written two new courses, an advanced conversation Spanish class through film, and a course on the civilization of Latin America. This was after spending three weeks in the summer writing that curriculum and working on the same curriculum throughout the fall semester. I've attended all departmental meetings, participated in strategic planning for a Language Resource Center at Irvine Valley College. I volunteered for Senior Day. In addition to these extracurricular activities, I've continued to perform all my normal duties as untitled, and therefore unpaid, Spanish Department Coordinator, creating the department's syllabi, ordering all books, mentoring adjunct faculty, writing letters of recommendation for faculty and students, reading and answering all email, coordinating scheduling for summer and fall, recommending adjunct staffing, organizing an on-campus conversational groups to give students more practice with Spanish, hosting a game night for students of Spanish, presenting a cultural evening on Nicaragua, and hosting a guided tour in Spanish Bowers Museum for IVC students. In April, I start taking two classes that will help keep me current in my field. I'm on vacation. Now I know that I don't have to do all this, and my family keeps reminding me to stop allowing my job to take up so much of my life. I bring this to your attention because the colleagues that I admire and respect at my institution put in similar hours, and I dare say that I'm at the lower end of the volunteer time for my campus. I'm here to ask you to honor the valuable service that the dedicated faculty of IVC and Saddleback give to their institutions by settling a contract with just compensation. Thank you.
Loma Hopkins, followed by Richard Wolfinger.
Hi. I have been trustees, ladies and gentlemen. I've been a full-time faculty member at Saddleback College for twenty-four years. Currently, I'm the Acting Coordinator for the Special Services Department, which is serving nearly fifteen hundred students with disabilities this year. In this position, I'm involved with hiring committees for three full-time tenure-track positions and several part-time faculty positions, some of which have been left unfilled with canceled classes due to our inability to attract appropriately qualified candidates. We have identified a few qualified and interested candidates already known to us for these positions, but they have declined to apply for financial reasons. As was stated earlier, we are ranked about, we are at fortieth out of seventy-two community college districts in the state of California when it comes to part-time salaries. When I began working at Saddleback College, this was a place known for excellence and a commitment to recruit and keep the best qualified faculty in their fields. That reputation has slowly declined, and now we are faced with hiring no one or internship-level individuals who are not professionally ready to embrace the responsibilities written into their job descriptions. This is very discouraging for those of us contemplating retirement in the near future. We wonder what will become of this college and Irvine Valley College unless we can be more competitive. When a position opened up in my division in years past, we would receive hundreds of applicants. Now we are lucky to get a handful who meet the bare minimum qualifications. I hope you can encourage a better salary schedule for the purposes of attracting more and better-prepared faculty candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. And here now to speak to items six point to fourteen, which is the Award of Contract for the McKinney Theater, we have Richard Wolfinger to be followed by Patricia Tanis, and I apologize if I botched the name. Mr. Wolfinger.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Richard Wolfinger. I'm President of Great West Contractors. Can you hear me if I stand straight up?
Yeah.
Okay. On February twenty-seventh, we provided a bid to you to build a project called the Fine Arts and Restroom Expansion, and I made a book for you if you'd like to look at some of the facts, it should be in front of each of you. We provided this bid, and about five to six days later, we were informed by Mr. Walter Rice that our bid was going to be rejected. He informed us that our bid was going to be rejected because our listed subcontractor was not an approved applicator for a system called the Garland System. I don't know that much about it, the system, because it was not required in your spec book to be required. On bid day, I received four bids for this project ranging from twenty-seven to forty-three thousand. Per public contract code, I'm required to list my lowest subcontractor bids. My lowest subcontractor bid was from a subcontractor called Golden State Roofing. His bid proposal said it was for plans and specs, and in all indications that I could see, it is. So I'm here to tell you that from everything that I've seen in the requirements in your spec book, I followed those requirements, and I've given you a bid for one million seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars, I believe. And tonight, you're going to award a bid to the second contractor for about ninety-three thousand dollars more, ninety-three thousand dollars more money for a reason that is not legal. The specifications, you're required to inform contractors, bidding contractors, of the requirements of a certain preparatory, excuse me, it's a tongue twister for me, item, and you didn't do that in any of your documents. In the specifications, you asked for that, but you said I could give you an equal.
Your two minutes are up. If you can wrap up, please.
Okay, I'll try to do that. My point is, the law requires that you tell me if you need a certain product, and I will bid that product for you. But you didn't tell me in the notice inviting bids, instructions to bidders, at a job walk, anywhere in the specifications was not, I was not informed to do that. So I provided a system for plans and specs that will provide the same warranty as the other system for which you're rejecting my bid. I guess my point is to you, I'm sorry, I don't mean to go over, but this is a very important job to me in these times right now, and it could save the district ninety-three thousand dollars in public funds, excuse me. My bid should not be rejected, and that's why I've spent the time to come here today. I want to build this project for you. We've been a public works contractor for nineteen ninety-three. We do libraries, police stations, fire stations, schools. That's our business. And I'm sorry.
I think your attorney is waiting to speak, so why don't we turn to her?
I'll let it go to her. I just ask one thing. Please look at these documents, and I ask that you reconsider the award for tonight, and I apologize for going over, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Six point one, six, six fourteen. And Patricia Tanis.
Hi, my name is Patricia Tanis. I'm an attorney. I represent Great West Contractors, and you just met Mr. Wolfinger. He's the President of that company. We're here tonight to ask you to either consider tabling the award of this particular Award of Contract, or indeed actually pull back and take what the law requires, take the lowest responsible bidder. You have a low responsible bidder. You can put ninety-three thousand dollars to better work for this college community district. You will be able to use that money in much better ways, I am sure, than paying more money than is necessary for this contract. This is a public contract. Public contracts are built in such a way that you will get, based on specifications, the actual project you're looking for at the lowest responsible price. We're asking you to take that. I have provided to you, there's a letter in the materials from me, and that letter spells out the requirements of Public Contracts Code, Section Thirty-four Hundred. And I know that you probably have legal counsel, and you can discuss it with that person. But that section requires that if there is to be a single-source product used in a particular public works contract, that that be in the notice to bidders. In other words, that the entity that is bidding to you is able to see from the notice what is required in terms of single-source, so that if there's a single-source product being used, which of course, the reason that the Public Contracts Code is built this way is to ensure that there is not any preference for particular products that when other equal products are available, the law requires that you allow an equal, and your specifications are built that way. They clearly state that a substitution can be made for an equal product unless, according to the code, under Section Thirty-four Hundred, a finding is made by you, the board, and I, there is nothing like that on your records to show that the board made a finding that the Garland Company product is the only roofing product that could be used in this particular project, and nor is it in the notice to bidders, nor is it in the invitation to bidders. And so this bidder was unaware of any specific product being requested. The bid is responsive, and it should be accepted, and you should save the taxpayers, and you should save this college district that money by awarding the contract to Great West Contractors. They want to build a project for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, any other requests to speak? That is it. All right. Thank you all very much. And at this point, we will go to Board Reports. And as usual, let's start with Trustee Jay.
No Board Report. Thank you.
Trustee Padberg.
Yes, just a brief comment. We had some very interesting events over the past few months, or past few weeks, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to be at Saddleback College groundbreaking for the Veterans Memorial. I had to be out of the state at that particular time unexpectedly. I was responsible for getting probably four out of the six cities to donate the five thousand dollars they did, along with others, certainly not all by myself. So it's a marvelous event. I apologize for having to miss it, and I can't wait to see it actually built. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take the opportunity to salute the Saddleback College community for the Veterans Forum and groundbreaking, which occurred on March fifth. It was a privilege to be there, and I think that's an outstanding project which our community will be very proud of. On March third, it was my privilege to attend in Anaheim the Thirty-Eighth Annual National Football Foundation and College Hall of Fame, a dinner of some six hundred guests, I believe, honoring scholar-athletes from throughout Orange County in both high schools and community colleges. And I'd like to again salute Saddleback College for the many kudos that their programs received during the course of that program. It was a real source of pride to be associated with the college at that event. If I may also, I'd like to take this opportunity to bring you the report from the Orange County Legislative Task Force. We have had two meetings since the last time the Board here met. Because of the state budget picture, the task force is now strategizing the legislative approach for this year, given these difficult budget times. There is some discussion in Sacramento of giving more local control to districts and lessening state regulations. The Public Affairs Directors of the four Orange County districts met with their counterparts at the University of California Irvine, Cal State University Fullerton, and the K-12 system just last week. They discussed mutual strategies to make sure the public understands the continuing value of public education even in these times of dire... They discussed mutual strategies to make sure the public understands the continuing value of public education even in these times of dire state budget crises. As a task force, we are evaluating things such as a joint letter-writing campaign to the Orange County delegation and submitting opinion pieces for the Orange County Register editorial page. Soon, the task force will be joined by Orange County Supervisor John Morlock, who will attend our May fifteenth meeting. During the course of Thursday's gathering of the task force, our chairman this year, Dr. Eddie Hernandez of the Rancho Santiago Community College District, indicated that the daily reports received regarding the budget out of Sacramento continue not to be good. Dr. Hernandez reported to us that in his district, they are in the process of voluntary budget reduction plans on implementing mandatory reductions very soon. It was indicated also, and a matter of concern to the task force, that some one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three teachers in Orange County have received March fifteenth notices of layoff. That was discussed. Also, during this time period since our last meeting here, there have been two Capitol Visit Days. That is where representatives from the several community colleges in Orange County go to Sacramento. One was on March fourth, and the other one on March twelfth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Fuentes. Trustee Williams.
Yes, good evening. Let's see, it's been a busy month for me. I was in Sacramento last week, and I woke up to see the Sacramento Bee, an article, "Many in Colleges Are Measuring in Stress." Yes, this was the Sacramento Bee. I'm going to pass this along to the chancellor. The Board has talked for over a year about a public safety issue, and that is early warning systems, security cameras here on the campuses. And just to discuss that on a national level, I did attend the Chronicle Higher Education Technology Forum. And the big discussions at that forum were these early notification systems, which are very, very critical. And also, one of the other issues was really the downloading of music. The Motion Picture Association of America and the recording industry are pursuing colleges and universities who through their IT, through the logging in on the accounts, are downloading music and movies. But the big overriding issue that I could clearly see was campus safety. And I attended a very interesting forum. We had the IT director from Virginia Tech where the campus shootings were. A year ago, I believe next month, over thirty students died. And what the different colleges are doing, it's come a long way. This has been a learning experience for me. At first, I was talking about security cameras. Now we've had a, just a rash of violent acts all over the whole nation with students, the student-on-student violence is pretty much what we're seeing. And there's a trend here. The discussions centered around, of course, the notification systems, cameras, education updating, for example, the campus police, the faculty. And a lot of it has to do with the mental state, if you will, of the students. So this article last week kind of centers on that. "College Kids Are So Frazzled They Can't Sleep or Eat or Study." Good grief, they're even anxious about spring break. Four in ten students say they endure stress often. Darker still, about one-sixth say they have friends who in the past year have discussed suicide. About ten percent say they have seriously considered it themselves. This is a trend, and it's not getting any better. It's not going away. I'll pass this to the chancellor. He'll make it available. Maybe you've read this already in a local paper. The survey was conducted by Edison Media Research from February twenty-eighth to March sixth with twenty-five hundred, twenty-two hundred undergraduate students surveyed. This is pretty scary stuff because this is very competitive. Academia is very competitive. A lot of pressures are placed upon the students, you know, by the institutional environment they're in. They're learning, they're trying to get good grades. Family pressures at home, I'm sure, play a part in this. So it's really time that this Board revisit this issue. I know the chancellor and his staff are studying it. We need to move forward on this because it's not going away. There seems to be kind of a lull right now in the action, but I think it's something we need to deal with. We need to vote as a Board up or down on this, but I think we really need to move forward on a multi-faceted approach now. Security cameras, alert system, and we need to talk about the mental health aspects of it with our counseling and having our faculty especially recognize these signs in the students you see and the campus police involved. So you all work together, and when you see these warning signs, hopefully, we can prevent this from happening there. Thank you.
Thank you. I missed the Vet Memorial Groundbreaking, and do apologize. I understand it was a wonderful event, got some press coverage. And out of the press coverage, I got a letter from a constituent of all of ours that I'd kind of like to call your attention to. And it's, it's a letter from a woman not telling us about her experience, but telling her, telling me about the experience of her husband. Someone who is near and dear to all of us on this Board. And the story is really kind of, in my view, certainly quite astounding what he did at the end of World War II. In nineteen forty-five, he took with him a German prisoner of war on two separate occasions to lead patrols behind enemy lines, resulting in the capture of eighty-two enemy soldiers. On one patrol, he talked sixty-three Germans into surrendering. I don't know how you do that. He talked sixty-three Germans into surrendering. Turns out, he retired from the Judge Advocate General's Corps. I guess that figures. In the dark of the night, on a second patrol, he walked into a pillbox, apparently armed with nothing but a forty-five pistol, and ordered nineteen German soldiers to lay down their weapons and surrender. He was with General Patton's Third Army. He retired with a battlefield commission as a lieutenant colonel. He retired with a combat infantryman badge, five European Theater of Operations campaign ribbons, and not one, but two Bronze Stars. And when he was done service to the United States, he came to South Orange County, where he is one of our founding trustees. Everybody on the Board knows Hans Vogel. And this is a report from his wife Barbara. I had no idea of his background, his accomplishments, but he is exactly the type of person that we should be honoring and do honor with that Vet Memorial. I wanted to mention his story because of his close connection to the district and the fondness we all feel for Hans. And perhaps, well, certainly for me, have a whole lot of additional respect for him. So I wanted to let my colleagues know his story. Trustee Milchick.
Okay. Thank you, President Wagner, and thank you for this story. I attended the Veterans Memorial, the groundbreaking of the new Veterans Memorial, and there were over two hundred veterans there. And there were four people, four veterans that spoke. One from the World War II, one from the Korean War, one from the Vietnam War, and one from the Iraq War. And it was truly an inspirational afternoon. There wasn't a time for comment, but these people talked about what happened to them. And all of the veterans in the room were certainly understood very much what it meant to them to serve their country. I wanted to discuss my father, who was a soldier in World War II and was in an evacuation hospital unit. Of course, he had been an upholstery salesman, and naturally, they made him a medic in the evacuation hospital unit. So he was one of the people that was in one of those hospital units like MASH has, that was on the front line, that had to go out into the field when people were being shot at and take the wounded, the most critically wounded in, and they did triage. And they, he was the one that shaved the heads of the, of the really badly wounded soldiers. And they operated them with minimum anesthesia and minimum antibiotics, and they were able to do a lot of good. And it was, it was certainly, he was a hero at the time. And I planned to buy a brick for him, or maybe even a bench. If you have a soldier that you know in your family that you'd like to honor, for a hundred dollars, you could buy a brick in their memory or in their honor. And for five thousand dollars, you could buy a bench in their honor. And that certainly would be a way to honor someone in your own family that you feel like was a hero. I also attended the Women's Opportunity Conference, which was excellent. And I just have to mention, I see Claire Elkins in the audience here. And I have to mention that both Claire Elkins, I took Claire Elkins tennis class several times before I was on the Board of Trustees. And I, I can hit a tennis ball now. I don't think I'm good, but I can hit the ball. She was an excellent instructor, and she was the one that founded the tennis team here at Salbach College. And both Claire and another one of our instructors, I want to make sure I get her name, Jan Duquette, are both honored as Physical Education Educators of the Year. As a matter of fact.
That is kind.
So one second. As a matter of fact, Claire was selected as Health Educator of the Year, while Duquette was named Fitness Exercise Physiology Instructor of the Year. And I also took.
Thank you.
A class from Jan Duquette in physical fitness prior to being elected to the Board of Trustees. And you can see how very physically fit I am because of the extraordinary help from these two wonderful women.
Thank you, Trustee Milchick. Trustee Lang.
Again, thank you, President Wagner, for sharing that wonderful story about the former trustee of the Board. That's wonderful. I was sorry to have missed the dedication, but certainly want to applaud President McCulloch, all the members of the Foundation Board, the college community that showed such great leadership for that project. The only other thing that I wanted to say was to express my condolences to Rich Botrance and the entire college community on the loss of Terry. Thank you.
Second that. Trustee Reynard.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to remind everyone about Fiorello, the opening play of the IVC's Performing Arts Center. It starts, or the opening night is April eleventh. I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the chancellor.
Yes, I was, thank you, President Wagner. I was also able to attend the Veterans Memorial groundbreaking ceremony here at Salbach College. It was a wonderful event. It was attended by many, many veterans from around this area, and they were really pleased and excited about this project. We look forward to its completion. And when it is completed, we should definitely, we will plan to invite former trustee Hans Vogel and honor him at this, at this event. Also, I should mention that we have received communication from Mayor Trish Kelly of Mission Viejo for recognizing Salbach College for this wonderful project, and that occurred about a week ago. So that was nice of them. Also, next week, I plan to attend American Association of Community Colleges Conference. In fact, AACC's Commission on Research and Technologies meeting, and I'm a member of that commission for AACC. Look forward to attending that meeting and bringing back some information of benefit and interest to the district. Thank you.
Thank you. We will entertain Board requests for reports. Have there been any written requests made? All right. Seeing none. We had item four point one, the curriculum report on the schedule or on the calendar, I gather, it has been polled.
Well, what we'll do is, the faculty members who are planning to do a presentation on this are out of town, so we'll bring this item back next month for their presentation.
All right, thank you. And let's turn to the consent calendar. Are there requests to remove items from the consent calendar? Trustee Padberg.
Yes, item five point one three.
Five point one? Oh, excuse me, five point three, thank you.
One point three, five point one.
Yes. I heard you. Five point one three. Thank you. Any others?
Move the ballots.
Second. Wait, 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 wait. I am pulling five point one two merely for the purposes of abstaining.
Um.
Trustee Milchick.
Yes, thanks. I'd like to pull item five point nineteen C. Five point nineteen C.
Five point nineteen. Very good, thank you. Any others? All right, the balance has been moved. Is there a second? Let's vote on the balance. All right. Nope, we need some more votes. Trustee Padberg, and I did. We both did. All right. Matter carries unanimously. Five point one two, the community education, as I said, I pulled it for purposes of abstaining as a client of my firm is on the list. All in, all right, let's vote. Trustee Fuentes, have you voted?
May I have just a moment?
All right, I keep pushing the button, and nothing happens. So here we go with our technical problems again. Why don't you clear it, and let's try again? All right, let's re-vote. There we go. Trustee Fuentes again. All right, let's, let's see a show of hands. All in favor, raise your hand. Trustee Fuentes? All right. All right, all opposed? Abstentions, two. The matter carries with two abstentions. Five point one three, pulled by trustee Padberg.
Yes, thank you. This is for trustee attendance at conferences and meetings. One in Palm Springs, which is a CCCT conference, and then the Chronicle Executive Leadership Forum. And the number in parentheses has to do with the number of nights. I'd like to know how many trustees have requested to attend this meeting, or these two meetings.
Chancellor, any requests?
Let me ask, Robina Allen, Ograce Garcia, do you have information on which trustees have requested to attend either of these two meetings at this time? Have any of the trustees indicated an interest in attending either or both of these conferences?
I may attend Triple CT, but not the Chronicle.
Okay. There's the answer.
Any others? All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, let's see if we can vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item five nineteen, pulled by trustee Milchick.
Oh, the reason I pulled this item was, the item states, on January sixteenth, two thousand and seven, the Board authorized the chancellor designee to approve individual business contracts, contracts, excuse me, up to a minimum of one hundred thousand dollars. And it just kind of struck me that the very first contract amount is for a real estate advisory service to ATEP, which I knew we need, but it, the contract is for nine hundred, for ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So it's just one dollar short of what would have to be brought to the Board for approval. And I'm just kind of astounded at this because it doesn't look like it's following the spirit of what the trustees are requiring administration to do. Because I don't see what harm would have been if we had waited another few weeks and put this on the agenda for general approval rather than having it, administration and the chancellor and our fiscal services people to approve of it and list the amount for nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. As I said, one dollar short of the required, hundred thousand dollars, without bringing it to the Board. What I'm asking is, why couldn't it have waited another two weeks to bring this to the Board so that it would be legally, it could have been a hundred thousand dollars, and the Board would have had an opportunity to discuss it and to see if we wanted to hire this particular real estate firm to, to help us on our test and legacy project? And I'm not against the concept, I'm just against the spirit of it.
Let's see if the Deputy Chancellor has an answer for us. What are you hiding?
Um, what? First of all, the contract is an hourly rate, so we pay for whatever we use. It's a service that's very valuable on our negotiations with Camelot. This is someone, this isn't a real estate company. This is a consultant.
Well, I know, real estate advisory services.
Right, in big real estate deals. So this is somebody that.
I knew that.
Deals with these all over. So this is somebody that deals with these all over the country and is very expert and has been very helpful. We could have waited, but that would mean that we've gone about as far as we could in the lease negotiations without getting the help of someone of this caliber. And so, you know, it was more than two weeks by the, actually would have been probably close to a month by the time when we actually did this until now. And so it was just a contract to allow us to begin work. I don't know what it's going to cost. It's unfortunate the amount. Wouldn't do that again, I guess. Maybe I'd make it 95,000.
[laughing]
But all it was is an authorization to move forward on an hourly rate.
Well, I see what you mean, but I personally, I'll vote for it, but I didn't actually vote to allow the administration to vote on business contracts up to a minimum of $100,000 because I think, I thought that was too high already, but I personally thought that was too high. But I'll vote for it because I do know that we need to start working with real estate advisory services, but I really think, actually, I'm not going to vote for it. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be-
Trustee Lang.
Oh, I'm sorry. Follow up?
I, because I really feel that the firm should have been brought to us and it should have been discussed why this firm was chosen above the other firms. And we do need advice in real estate operations on a project this big, but I think it should have been brought to the board prior to it's being approved by staff. Thank you.
Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Thought you were done. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I just also want to go on the record of wholeheartedly supporting every word that, well, maybe not every word, but basically the sentiment that trustee Milchikir has just expressed.
Is trustee Padberg?
I would think that when this item comes to us in the future, it would be helpful to have some notation that this is not a firm dollar figure, it's to be spent up to. It's, I think that would make us more comfortable.
Thank you. Is there a motion to ratify this?
Move approval.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Let's vote. And the matter passes with one no vote. We are at item 6.1. It's a resolution to adopt secret guidelines. Here for approval.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Requests to speak, anyone? Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. We are at item 6.2, which is to consider the short-range plan and notice of exemption. This requires a public hearing, so we will convene a public hearing. Let me ask the secretary, is there any request to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move to item 6.3, which is the resolution to adopt the short-range plan and notice of exemption.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Moving seconded, Chancellor Mather.
Thank you, President Wagner. I would just like to offer two minor revisions under the status. One, in the third line where the sentence begins with the environmental impacts associated with the development of the ATEP campus should be "were" fully addressed rather than "was". And then, in the second line from the bottom under status where there's a reference to Appendix G, it should be Appendix H. Thank you.
Further discussion? All right, let's vote on the item. Wait, wait, wait. Trustee Lang.
That is correct. Yes, we have the revised resolution on this item.
Yes.
Yes.
You are absolutely correct. Good call. There has been a request to amend this resolution.
And let me call upon-
Go ahead.
If I may, let me call upon our counsel, Aileen Taber, in this regard to point out the changes that have been put in into this resolution since the agenda was posted.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. For the record, my name is Aileen Taber, an attorney with the law firm of Jackson, DeMarco, Titus, Peterson, and Peckinpah, and your special counsel for dealing with the ATEP project. Just briefly, there's been some minor suggested changes to the resolution that I'll walk through with you. On the second paragraph where it says, "Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District Adopting the Short-Range Plan," we added the language that says dated March 2008 because there have been three drafts of the version and just to clarify the exact version that you'll be considering. If you could turn to page two, it's the one, seventh whereas, and the second line, second line to the bottom, it says, "other interested persons, comma," and we added the word "including the city" to acknowledge the fact that the city of Tustin was given specific notice of this public hearing. Then on page four of seven, the second whereas, I'm sorry, the third whereas, it says, "whereas in response to the February 15th, 2008 letter," and we added the date so that you would know, I believe before it said January 24th, but it's actually the February 15th, 2008 letter. Then the next three whereases were added to deal with the letter that the Board of Trustees received today on March 24th and to acknowledge that you had received that letter and that a detailed response and to identify proposed changes that you would be directing the staff to make in response to the city's letter. On page six, the fourth whereas, where it says, "whereas the Board of Trustees after due consideration of the city's comments dated," and then we added in March 24th to recognize the March 24th letter that the board has received from the city. And finally, on page seven, we added number six, which is the provisions that would be directing the staff to make some additional changes to the short-range plan. Paragraph seven, we clarified, as I said, that it's the March 2008 version with the changes that were identified in paragraph six. We also added number eight, which is the provision that talks about having the staff work on developing a parking lot proposal to deal with the increased enrollment at ATEP. And then, on paragraph number nine, we added the, where it says, "transmitted a copy of the short-range plan," and we added the words dated March 2008 with the revisions identified in paragraph six so that it's clear that the version that needs to be transmitted to the city of Tustin is the version that has all of the changes that are referenced in this resolution. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Trustee Padberg.
Yes, if you could just go through the first change on page one, I think it was. Again, I missed that.
Sure, I'm sorry about that. It's actually in the second paragraph from the top. The first paragraph is the resolution about adopting the notice of exemption. The second paragraph is adopting the short-range plan. And in this third line, where it says, "adopting the short-range plan," we added the words dated March 2008 so that we knew which of the versions was being adopted.
Trustee, trustee Lang.
Yes, so move adoption of the revised resolution.
Second. Moving seconded. Seeing no further questions, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Thank you, trustee Lang, good catch on that one. We are at item 6.4, extending the ERNA period, adopting an amendment number four.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.5, the reimbursement agreement with Camelot Development Tustin. Is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Is there a second? Discussion? Matter carries with two no votes. Item 6.6, amended contract with the law firm of Jackson, DeMarco, Titus, Peterson, and Peckinpah. Here for approval? Is there a motion?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. 6.7, special services agreement with the law firm of Belvedere Cassidy Whitmore. Here for approval? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Trustee Jakes, please. Thank you. Matter carries unanimously. 6.8, allocation of 2007, 2008 basic aid funds for priority projects.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on this item? Let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.9, are we going to nominate anyone to the CCCT Board of Directors?
Move to table.
Second.
Non-debatable. Let's vote on a motion to table. Trustee Milchikir, please. All right. Matter is tabled with one no vote. Item 610, here for discussion and/or approval. This is another list of policies and it is my understanding administration has polled six, has polled Board Policy 4072 for some further work. Any other items to discuss? All right, then we-
I'll move approval of the items, then.
Well, I'll entertain a motion. This is for approval. Is there a second? All right, it's here for approval, absent 4072. Discussion?
Yes, I would-
Trustee Lang.
I was going to move for acceptance for discussion because I think there have been some comments that have been provided that would help clarify some of the language in these documents and I would encourage us to bring it back for approval at the next meeting.
All right, they are here for discussion now, so maybe, I mean, if you want to talk to any of those, get back in line because trustee Padberg has asked, please.
You know what, I'll withdraw my motion for discussion.
Withdraw.
I'm here to second his motion for more discussion. Is that what you're asking?
Well, we have it now.
Yeah, I, he wants more time, I believe, is what he's asking for. Is that correct? You're asking that it come back?
Yes, to incorporate changes that trustees have-
Received.
And provided to his creation.
Right. I'll second that motion.
Chancellor.
I was basically going to say the same thing, that I've received some feedback, some comments from trustees, at least a couple of trustees thus far, and we will consider those comments and we can bring them back next month.
Trustee Williams.
Well, I think the chancellors are covered at them, so trustees either call or email the chancellor with your comments then, and this gives us another month. So, now with the, well, I've withdrawn my motion, so, but as far as the Board Policy Revision Committee goes, we're going to reconsider these again next month and there will be another batch brought forward, correct? For the first-
This batch will be brought forward next month and then we'll see if we have any other batch. I can perhaps send it to the update so that you could be reading those in the meantime.
Okay, I don't want to fall too far behind and end up with a whole page of board policies and, you know, an inch-thick document, so, okay, that's it, thank you.
All right, yeah, and then he's here for discussion and not for approval. It doesn't need a motion, so at this point, we, what's that?
I have a motion. And I seconded his motion.
For discussion.
To table, right, there's a motion on the floor.
All right, let's vote on a motion to table. And trustee Fuentes is not here. Record him as absent.
Can you push the button so it can register?
Well, I don't bear a vote for it.
Can you, can you, can you, all right, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the matter carries with one abstention and these will come back to us next month. 611 is here for review and study more policies. Is there, all right, any comments trustees would like to make as to these? Chancellor Mather.
If any trustees have any comments, I would encourage you to communicate those to me in the next week or so so that we can consider your comments and suggestions so that we can bring it back next month, hopefully for discussion slash approval.
All right, this is here for review and study. All in favor of review and study signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Matter carries with one abstention. 612.
Wholeheartedly approve 612.
I'll take it that's a motion to approve. And I will happily second that motion. This is an award of honorary degrees to two very worthy recipients, Julie Davis and William Woollett, and could not, could not be happier for both of them. And seeing trustee Fuentes has not returned yet, let's, let's vote on these. And again, let's do it by voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Trustee, trustee, I did.
Trustee Milchikir, wrong. Trustee Padberg abstains. All right. 613, this is a contract addendum for Nudesic Inc.
Move approval.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Trustee Milchikir.
I request to speak because apparently- I'm sorry, didn't have my mic on. This is, this will finalize the student information service. It states that by the year 2010, our student information service will be obsolete and we need to replace it, so we're replacing it with basic aid funds. And it appears that we're adding an additional $1 million with this addendum. Is that correct?
Yes, let me call upon Vice Chancellor Serbin to comment on it.
This addendum is to, indeed, for this year, this is a four-year project. You may recall that in February 2006, a plan was presented to the board for a four-year replacement cycle and we are this year, oh, 708, is second of the fourth year replacement for the student information system. Basically, what we are doing, we are shifting some money from year three of this development project into year two. However, we are not impacting, you have approved in 2006, $12 million for the entire replacement. We are not asking for more money. It's a shift of the, you know, the money you already allocated, which we actually have within our budget, is because of the scope of work has been somewhat different from the original estimate, but we are not changing the overall budget or the four-year overall timeline for the replacement of the system.
Okay, so it's, the $12 million, it was, the board already approved of $12 million for this-
Right. So we are not asking for additional allocation.
You're shifting it to now rather than two years down the line.
Right.
Okay. I'd like to make some comments because I've registered five people in my family for a study abroad class and I think that the registration process online is a little confusing for students and, because it was a little confusing for me and I'm on the Board of Trustees. In other words, when you want to apply for a class, you have to essentially fill out the statewide application to approve for exception to all the community colleges. And it doesn't say that, but it's, that's what you're essentially doing. And at that point, I don't, I think it should explain in the registration system that you're filling out an application to apply to the California Community Colleges and if you've ever attended a community college prior to this, you would have the same username and password, and I think that would be helpful for students. And then, when you finally apply and you gain acceptance by the California Community Colleges and you get your email back saying that you have time to register, there's pictures of Visa and MasterCard, but, so essentially, in a way, it's saying that only Visa or MasterCard can be used, but it doesn't say that, excuse me, American Express cannot be used. So if you put in your American Express card number and you just keep hitting it over and over again, it won't accept it, but it doesn't tell you why. And if you finally- And, um, i, if you finally figure it out, or what I did, is I called A and R, and, and I said, "Why isn't it taking my card?", and they said, "Well, it doesn't accept, um, uh, um, American Express." So I, I think it should be stated right on there, it doesn't, so people don't have to call A and R and, uh, get that explained to them. So, I think those would be really helpful improvements, to help the, uh, registration, um, e, experience for our students, because it's, I think, I think it's, I mean, I think that our registration program is really excellent, but I think it could be improved, and, because we don't want students to start applying, and then just get really frustrated and say, "Forget it", and then decide not to come, because we really do want to encourage students to apply and take our classes. So, the easier we make it for students, the more we can explain, I think the better it would be, so.
Well, I, I would like to clarify, actually, the application is specific to a college. The application is not, we are using CCC Apply, which is an application used by about eighty percent of the one hundred and nine community colleges. However, when you apply, you apply to a specific college, either Saddleback or Irvine. So, I, I want to, to make that clear, it's not an application that goes to all one hundred and nine colleges.
No, no, you, you're, you're applying, what I mean is, it is, but it's the application form that's used by all one hundred and nine colleges, because I, I signed up someone who had originally signed up for classes, taken a number of classes at Santa Barbara City College.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I, i, if I, I, I was able to obtain this young woman's, um, username and password, and I was able to, um, register, so it's, it says you're applying for Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, but essentially, you're applying to the whole statewide college system, that, that's where it goes to. And then you get the information back, that, that says you can apply, you're, you're okay to apply for Saddleback College or Irvine Valley College. You're applying to it, but it's, it's a statewide application, and I, I think people don't know that.
I'm, I'm happy to provide additional information to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Trustee Lang.
Which is why I talked with, um, thank you. Talked with, uh, Vice Chancellor Serbin about it, because it did appear to me that, uh, in C, we were reducing the scope of this contract, and at the same time approving over an additional million-dollar fee, uh, for, I guess what was originally expected for this module of the contract, uh, but, uh, uh, she's assured me that, uh, uh, the scope of the entire contract itself, uh, won't be exceeded, and that, um, um, that we've just essentially shifted the resources a, around within the contract itself, and this is part of that, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And I, I will meet with you, okay, and, and discuss those, those particular items, uh, to clarify them, okay?
Sure, I'll be happy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Has this been moved for approval? All right, look, further discussion? All right, let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously.
Uh, point of order, please.
Sure.
I would vote to, or move that we extend the meeting until, say, nine fifteen, we're almost there, uh, for, because curfew was in four minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Matter carries unanimously, we'll go to nine fifteen. 6.14. This is the, uh, Saddleback College Award of Bid to McKinney Theater Restroom Expansion. This is the item that Mr. Wolfinger discussed with us earlier. And is there discussion? Trustee Padberg.
Yes, um, I am concerned about the comments that were made earlier, and, um, we have not had a chance to discuss this, it was not on our closed session item, with legal counsel. I would like to, uh, suggest that we do take that, um, I'm eager to get this project moving and underway, but I do believe that we should discuss it with legal counsel, so I, at this point, I'll recommend that we table up, pardon me.
There, there, whoa, 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 whoa.
Gary Portner wanted to speak to us.
Let, let, all right, hang, hang on, I did not hear a motion, I heard a recommendation.
I'm making a motion.
Wait, 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 and if you make that motion, then we can't discuss it. The motion, I think, will be in order at some later point, but at this point, I think we ought to-
He doesn't have a second, so go for it.
We ought to, well, we ought to discuss it. Um, I've got Gary, and then, uh, Trustee Lang. Deputy Chancellor Porter.
Yeah, with regard to the question of receiving legal, um, counsel on this, we, we have, um, and it's, we've received counsel from the same attorney at the, uh, Orange County Department of Education, that helps us with all of our contracts, and, um, Brandy Delena here, uh, has had conversations with her. She could also, I think, fill you in on some information about the bid specification, maybe, so, uh, maybe she can provide-
Mr. Delena?
Some, uh, some help for you.
Should I wait, or go ahead? Okay.
I was actually looking for a resource person from the district, like Mr. Rice's name is mentioned, but, uh, perfectly, uh, here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Rice and I worked on this together. Um, one of the statements that were made by Mr. Wolfinger, um, was that we were working off of a proprietary specification, that was his primary concern. The way our specification reads is that we would have, number one, as our roofing product, a garland product, and within the specifications, there was also an allowance for an "or equal". If the "or equal" clause was going to be chosen, then it was necessary for the contractor who was interested in an "or equal" to inform the district prior to bid. Now, we take that approach because we want to provide an opportunity to all of the contractors to have an equal playing field, so that if there was an alternate material that we were going to consider, we would then have an opportunity to provide it in an amendment or an addendum to the con, other contractors, and then they would all have an opportunity to bid on that type of roofing material. Um, we did go and have conversations with our legal counsel, and she, um, agreed that the steps that we have taken are according to the Public Contract Code.
Further questions, further discussions? All right, seeing no further discussions, I will entertain a motion with respect to this item.
Move the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in, not debatable, all in favor, well, vote. The matter is tabled with two no votes. We are at item 615, which are the academic personnel items, and let me start as usual with the Vice Chancellor, who says there are no amendments, additions, or changes.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Trustee Milchik.
I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that, um, Michael Runyon is, uh, retiring, and he has been, um, a faculty member for over thirty years. He started work, um, on August twenty-second, which is my birthday, nineteen seventy-seven, so that means he's, he's worked for the district for thirty years, and he served as a, um, as a faculty member for many years, and when I was on the board, he also, uh, worked as a Vice Chancellor under the interim Chancellor, um, Kathy Hodge. And so I just wanted to bring it to people's attention, and, um, thank him for his thirty years of service to the district.
All right. Seeing no further comments, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 616, here for approval, these are the classified personnel items, and again, the Vice Chancellor indicates no changes. Discussion?
Move approval.
Is there a second? All right, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 617. IVC's Network Equipment for Business Science and Technology Innovation Center, here for approval. I'll entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Wholeheartedly, yes.
Matter moved and seconded, discussion? Let's vote on the item. Trustee Milchik. Thank you. Matter pa, pa, uh, carries unanimously. Item 618. This is to rescind an award of bid for stereolithography equipment. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Moved and seconded, and a couple of trustees want to speak. Trustee Padberg.
Well, this is highly unusual, um, to rescind an award of bid. I assume we are on perfect legal ground with this, um, and, um, apparently it's being done because we've had the same type of equipment donated, is that correct?
Yes, Deputy Chancellor.
It's very unusual. The equipment that we had donated was from the company who bid, and we awarded the bid to, so they decided, uh, they'd rather give it to us than sell it. Um, and the only, uh, the only difference is that, that we have to take it on, with our own maintenance, they're not going to maintain it. So, you're not going to have this happen very often.
Trustee Milchik.
Well, I was just going to thank the, the company for donating, uh, the, the, the equipment, and it, it looks like, um, uh, I'm not sure why they decided to donate the equipment, rather than sell it, but we, 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 uh, I, I just wanted to thank them for doing it, so.
President McCullough, how much did we save?
Well, it's actually grant-funded, so it's, it's through the National Science Foundation grant, um, neighborhood about eighty thousand dollars. And to answer Trustee Padberg's, it's the same piece of equipment. It's not a different piece of equipment, it's exactly the same piece.
Excellent. All right, well-
And, and Sony, excuse me, Sony donated the equipment, was it Sony? Oh, thank you, Sony.
Well, let's vote and see if the board will accept this largest. Matter carries unanimously. Item 7.1, here for information. This is, uh, curriculum development, to report from, oh, this is, this is what was four, became 4.1, and has- All right, all right. 7.1 became 4.1, and a new 7.1 was distributed to us, uh, several days ago. This, the new 7.1, my apologies, deals with, with GASB forty-three and forty-five, and a compliance vendor selection. Does everybody have the replacement pages? Or at least has had the opportunity to look at them and to-
They, they were in the online agenda, the replacement pages, so.
All right. It's an information item, it's not here for a vote. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Trust, Trustee Williams.
Uh, Deputy Chancellor Portner, on the GASB forty-five, uh, without having the entire document in front of me, we have until July first to make the decision on the, uh, retiree medical fund.
In the year beginning July first, we have to have complied with the regulations.
Okay.
So, um, we intend, we, we should be bringing you a recommendation next month, is our schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's for the retiree, uh-
No, no, I do, I read, I read the item, um, it was on, on the online agenda, and I, I, I read everything on the online agenda. Um, I, I, um, was just wondering, I mean, it looked like, uh, the people that are willing to, uh, work for us and help provide us, uh, the assistance in, in meeting these, uh, requirements, they're a pretty, uh, prestigious group of, of, uh, organizations, so, do we decide, how would we decide which one of these would, uh, would assist us in, in, um, preparing for the outstanding, um, uh, actually, our outstanding liability for, 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 uh, people that retire, but that doesn't include their medical benefits, the, um, what we're, what we have to fund for them? Do we pick the, the, the organization on the lowest bidder, like we do in ordinary bidding, or do we, I'm just asking how, how this process will be, um, decided?
First of all, it's not required that we take low bid, it isn't like, uh, bidding a, a building construction project, that type of thing, it's professional services. Uh, the process that we're using is we have a committee, uh, that includes, uh, the two, uh, directors of fiscal services, one at each college, Beth Muller, myself, Vice Chancellor King, and, uh, we have a consultant who specializes in GASB forty-five compliance, who knows all the rules, regulations, questions to ask, and, and, uh, we have a matrix, uh, very extensive matrix for, uh, all of the issues, we can share that with you-
Mm-hmm, okay.
When it comes, time that we bring it to you, and we evaluate all of the vendors based on that, and then we have discussions with them about the price, uh, and, uh, although we're not required to take the lowest price, we, we're probably going to give you a recommendation to take the lowest price, so, uh, it's a, a very exhaustive process.
Okay, e, excellence, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing the process with us, I appreciate it.
No further discussion, we'll move to item 7.2, which is also an information item. It's an update of the IVC's seal. Questions, comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll go to, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm now seeing two. I'm faster than you, but nevertheless. Trustee Padberg.
Uh, I just want to comment, uh, on how, uh, I think this is a, a very excellent design, and, um, and the process. Uh, I find it very curious that this design does not come to us for board approval, when in fact redesigning the district logo did come to us for board approval, and I think it's a highly superior design, and certainly much more collegiate. Um, however, I do question why this did not come for board approval.
Chancellor.
We'll be happy to bring it to the board for approval, for action next month.
I, I think to be consistent, just a good follow-up, that we should, if we're going to have other logos come to us for approval.
Trustee Milchik.
Uh, just wanted to say, I, I like, uh, particularly on, on the online agenda, you can see it in color, and it, it's, uh, very pretty in color. Um, you know, we, our agenda comes in black and white, so you can't really see the, uh, the full essence of the logo, but it, uh, it's, it's a book, and behind the book is an orange tree, which is, uh, our, our heritage, uh, and, um, the heritage of, of the district, and, uh, the Greek words, the Latin words, I'm sorry, are, um, "A posse ad esse", which means "from pass, from possibility to actuality", with the year of, of founding of the college, nineteen eighty-five, and I think it's a very nice seal.
Thank you. Seeing no further requests to speak, we'll move to item 7.3, which is an NSF grant, Train the Trainer Wrap the Prootyping Workshop, here for information. Questions, comments from the board? All right. And now at 7.4, another information item, this is the Saddleback College and the IVC Professors of the Year. Let me, let me turn to both college presidents, if they would identify for us their full-time and, uh, part-time professors of the year. Let's begin with, uh, President McCullough.
Yes, this is a relatively highly competitive, um, activity that occurs on the campus, and, uh, Genio Bishon is, uh, a new faculty member, but is highly regarded, uh, as a nursing instructor, and, uh, she is, um, um, highly regarded, uh, both in the state and, uh, for her work in, in nursing. Mildred Landia here is well-known in the Emeritus Institute, uh, she is, uh, of advanced age, and continues to, uh, teach the students in that, uh, in that, uh, musical program that the Emeritus has, so we're very proud of those two individuals.
Thank you, and President Rockman.
We're sharing books here tonight. Okay. Yes, first of all, our, uh, full-time, I'm very, very pleased to recognize or have Dr. John La Citra, uh, recognized, uh, very well-respected counselor at IVC for a very long time, uh, particularly known for his, uh, special program that he's done on the side called Making Transfer Easy, uh, MTE program, it's been, uh, very, very successful. Uh, we also have, uh, as our part-time, uh, Jennifer Be, Beili, I assume, I'm not ruining that, that name, uh, from Social and Behavioral Sciences, uh, also received a lot of kudos from, uh, that nomination, and particularly the dean, actually, in that case, too. Uh, we at IVC also have an Emeritus faculty that we recognize, and that's Pam Schrader.
Chancellor Mather.
I would just like to add that at an appropriate time, uh, later in the year, we would bring resolutions, um, to the board honoring these individuals.
Congratulations to these fine, five fine faculty members, and good luck with the Teacher of the Year award. All right, uh, seeing no further discussion, we'll move to item 7.5. This is the, uh, Monthly Basic Aid Report. Questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
What happened to 7.4? It's identical to 7.1?
I missed, I'm sorry, did I miss one?
7.4 is identical to 7.1, I'd like some clarification, please.
Wrong in the new agenda.
Not in the new agenda.
Outline update. Not the one in the body here.
No. Current, current agenda, 7.4 is Professors of the Year, and 7.5 is the Basic Aid Report. Right, all right. We've just, we've just finished 7.4, which is the Professors of the Year. Correct? All right. 7.5, Basic Aid Report, questions or comments? And if I might ask the Deputy Chancellor, if, if, if I turn to Exhibit C, or actually, it's in B, too, but it's graphically displaced- but it's graphically displayed in Exhibit C, there is a, appears to be a relatively precipitous drop-off at about this time, about this time last year, I suppose, of our cash balances. Exhibit C. While he looks at it, trustee Williams. And that's not it, because this is two thousand six, two thousand seven.
Each, each year, the property tax installments are made by all of us, either through an impound account or we all write checks in December and April, and I believe that what you see is, prior to December, you see all of our balances dropping, and then after the tax collector collects the money, there's some months later that we get an infusion of cash, and then that happens again after the April property tax payments, we then receive another infusion of the, of the revenue for the property taxes. So, I, we fluctuate throughout the year, I believe maybe where we're going here.
I'm, I'm aware of the fluctuation, but that's not reflected in the graph, and I don't think that explains it, I mean, it's, it's, looks like a year-long trend.
Well, it's also... It's also affected by the work that's being done in the construction projects that are going on, and the payments that are being made, and the timing of the payments, and...
Okay.
Does that, does that explain it?
If that's the right answer.
It's the right answer.
All right, so it's, it's payments over the course of the last year for the building projects?
Yeah, yeah.
Principle, okay. That, that's a fine explanation, thank you, any further questions or comments? All right, item seven point six, another information item, the Facilities Plan Status Report? Yes. Oh, it's moved and seconded, and I like the way you guys think, all right. Everything else here is an information item, it has been moved and seconded, let's vote on adjournment.
Point of order.
Point of order, trustee Padberg.
Before we would vote to adjourn, and I'm assuming it's going to carry by the enthusiastic smiles on my board members' faces, I'd like to point out that we all received a gift from our chancellor of tea of some sort, that totals forty-four dollars on the back of it, and I just remind you, your seven hundred forms are due, and this would be reportable if you choose to accept it, and for that reason, I will not.
For any of thing?
It's rupees.
It's forty-four rupees. I'll tell you later how much it is in dollar.
But it's clear you're not worth forty-four dollars. All right. There, there is a motion, there is a motion to adjourn. Ah, let's vote on the motion to adjourn. Now, wait, wait, Nancy, I need a vote, trustee Padberg, I need a vote. Matter does carry with three no votes, including, I will note mine, just to finish this out. Well, we are done, thank you, see you all next month, be safe.